Town Council, you are welcome. Emmanuel Waliyah from the office of the clerk.
Honorable members of parliament, Honorable Dr. Singombe.
Chair, good afternoon. Good afternoon, my colleagues. Good afternoon, permanent witnesses. And Seshake, good afternoon, and you are welcome to your committee. My name is Dr. Honorable Edgar Singombe, MP for Dundumwezi in Kalomo South. You're welcome.
Honorable Moené. Thank you so much, Chair. Good afternoon to you. Afternoon, Seshake, Town Council. Afternoon, our permanent witnesses. Afternoon, the viewers and the listeners out there. I'm Lohamba Moené, Member of Parliament for Mangango. Thank you.
Honorable Paviu Ma.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Secretary for Town Council. Kalobo Paviu Ma is my name. I represent the good people of Sacred Constituence, Kithwenda Kopabel.
Honorable Moené.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Seshake. Honorable Director of Council, Honorable Dr. Moené, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe constituency. There are good issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Town Council. Under Darius, Member of Parliament for Siavunga constituency. Privilege to chair this session. Before. Under Cup 12 of the laws of Zambia, members of parliament are protected and the same is extended to you when you appear before any parliamentary committee that whatever you say during our interactions will not be used against you. However, if you choose to mislead us or mislead your committee, misinform your committee, the same Cup 12 will be used against you. I have no doubt in my mind that you wouldn't take that route and that this afternoon you give us factual information, the information that will help us generate a very good report, the report that we then submit before Honorable Madam Speaker. With that said, I may now invite you, Councilor, to make your submission before your committee. You may proceed.
Chair, Seshake, you are most welcome. I am your humble servant. Please permit that the constituency. Chair, thank you very much.
You are not a humble. Thank you. You do have weight. Thank you very much, Honorable Chair.
Thank you so very much once again, Honorable Chair, and. This committee. I seek your indulgence, Chairperson, before I do the presentation of my report that have an addition to my submissions on Appendix number 13, some information that we missed to attach. And I want to ask your indulgence, Chair, if you can allow me, that I submit as part of what we are presenting. I seek your indulgence.
Well received. You may proceed. You'll get it when need arises. But for now, you may proceed and it's due. I admit it.
Thank you so very much, Chairperson. I'll go straight to the first query. The query. Income and expenditure. And our report is presented in a table. And I'll talk about, the first one is on local taxes. And a variance of about 100. Chair. From the local business. Especially on property. In terms of action, I would like to state that demand notices were issued to property that did not comply. The evidence, Chair, is attached on Appendix 1. In terms of remedial measures, we will continue to ensure that there is constant engagement with the relevant stakeholders. On fees and charges, Chair, because of the query was due to the land which was supposed to have been given to the general public and delaying in signing the partnership agreement in collection. The local authority and ZRI, which was not signed 2023, but was signed in 2024. The action. Action. That the parcels of it have seen. Offers to the prospective developers. We've attached the minutes of the council that offered plots in 2024, as well as the memorandum of understanding that was signed between ourselves and ZRI. Management, in terms of remedial measures, management will only in future include revenues that we are setting that will be able to collect in that particular year. The other one is on licenses. Because of the query, Chair, management wishes to acknowledge the observation that was made by the Auditor General. The adverse variance was due to under collection on other licenses during the fiscal year. So management has made the downward adjustments on the 2024 budget in order to have realistic budget estimates according to our updated database. So in terms of revenue remedial measures, Chair, we will continue to ensure that we are realistic in the way we budget. On. Compliance by the timber levies, people that should have paid timber. Management wish to state that we entered into an agreement. And the revenue has since increased. So we've attached the performance comparison before we engage them and after we engage them regarding the collection of timber levy. So management, Chair, that is on Appendix 3. In terms of remedial measures, management will continue enhancing collaboration with other government departments. On purpose, this was as a result of the formation of, we are. As a result of the formation of the task force on revenue collection and also some vigorous sensitizations that we conducted. In terms of action, we will continue. As well as, in as much as we do our projections. Remedial measure, management will continue working and strengthening the operations of our. The other one, Chair, on. Commercial venture, which recorded a loss of about 26,000. Management wishes to state that it due to reduced patronage and entrant of the new competitors and the entrant of new competitors while our overhead costs remained the same. Management wishes to state that it brought out new strategies to attract customers. We mounted and out the television screen, decorated our motel, the landscaping, and also other things like the bri and sopambus which we introduced. The appendix is attached on 4. In terms of remedial measures, management will continue exploring strategies that will ensure that the commercial venture is viable. Other receipts, management wishes to state that the over collection was due to the extra efforts that was made by the task force in reinforcing revenue collection. Management, Chair, wishes to state that the budget for 2024 was adjusted upwards based on the collections that we collected. We updated our database, so we updated our budgets for, under this particular vote, for 2025. For 2024, I beg your pardon. Management will continue as a remedial measure, working and strengthening the operations of the task force. On local government equalization fund, because of the query, this was due to the deductions of lascive and union fees at source. So management has since updated individual levers of both lascive and union. Our union fees. The evidences are attached on Appendix 5. Remedial measure, management will continue to engage in the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Other grants, management wishes to report that the cause of the query was due to not receiving the budgeted grants. This was in re-overs from the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. So management wishes to state that the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development was engaged and the 2024 allocation, Chair, was increased as indicated on Appendix number 6. In terms of remedial measure, management will endeavor to budget based on available data and also the trend analysis. The second one, Chair, is failure to spend. Because of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to clarify that the cause of the query was due to failure to spend the 2.3 million as at 31st December 2023, as shown below. So Chair, that is the table that is showing the monies and the different accounts that this money was sitting in. We had monies in salaries account, in operations and other projects related activities. Action taken on the matter, management wishes to state that the 2.3 million was spent in 2024 on salaries, capital projects and operations, as shown in the table below. So the table below, Chair, shows the expenditure that was incurred. Then there's Appendix 7, that is showing the details regarding to the expenditures. Remedial measure, management will endeavor to generate all the revenue budgeted for and spend within that particular financial year. The other query, Chair, is on annual performance, where there is an adverse performance on the collection. Because of the query, Chair, management wishes to acknowledge the observations by the Auditor General and wish to report that the negative performance of 3.4 for the budget and income representing a 42, negative 42% adverse performance was a result of the under collection from seven budgeted revenue streams. Management will continue as an action taken, Chair, to improve on the revenue collection efficiency and will enhance community sensitization and social media platforms in addition to enforcement for compliance of all businesses operating within the district. So the table below, Chair, shows. Shows the income stream, item by item, and is just as the one that I presented on the first.
You can go to page 8. On the reliable targets output not achieved.
Thank you so very much, Chairperson. Our response, Chair, is that management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wish to state that the cause of the query and action taken are in as presented in the table below. On outstanding bills, the cause of the query, this was due to failure on our part, Chair, to pay staff creditors such as settling in allowances, leave travel and termino benefits to the staff. Action taken, Chair, management wishes to report that settling in allowance, leave travel and termino benefits have since been paid along with the monthly salaries to all the employees. Chair, the remedial measure, management will continue paying staff obligations as and when funds are available. Then on economic development, this was due to the block making machine that was to be procured and other logistics to be incurred during the procurement process. Management, Chair, wishes to state that the block making machine as action taken has since been procured, delivered, and it's currently operational. Management, Chair, will ensure that the programs are implemented as planned. Then the other one, Chair, is on compliance with registration and regulations. Our response as management on the cause of the query, Chair, is that management acknowledges the auditor's observations and wishes to state that the query on irregular monthly allowances paid to retirees on payroll was due to, I think, the interpretation of Secular Number Local Government Service Commission 101/8/1, which states that principal officers may wish to note that in accordance with Article T89, subsection 2 of the Constitution of Zambia Amendment Act number 2 of 2016, the phrase retained on payroll means that such a retiree will continue to be paid what they were getting through the payroll at the time of their retirement. Action taken, management wishes to confirm that the payment of transport and education allowance has since been discontinued and the irregular paid amounts have since been recovered from the retired officers by debiting their levers on what the council is owing. The evidence, Chair, is attached on Appendix number 9. Remedial measure, management will continue to ensuring that all, that we fully comply with Public Service Management Division, Secular Number B26 of 2022, as well as the Local Government Secular Number 101/81. Other query, Chair, is on this in the management of current. Management's response, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the poor maintenance of the main market ablution block was due to the inconsistencies in periodic maintenance caused by limited cash flow. Management further wishes to state that the market ablution block had no running water to due to the old pipe system that needed overhaul and replacement. Action taken, management wishes to report that the main market ablution block has been fully rehabilitated and is being maintained. See Appendix 10. The remedial measure, management will ensure consistency in maintenance of public facilities to guarantee their upkeep as well as functionality. The other query, Chairperson, is trading from undesignated places. That is abandoned, Seshake, many markets. Because of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to clarify that the cause of the query was traders' decision to abandon the market shelter and the estate from designated areas. The decision was driven by the mindset of trader, leaving it as a more convenient way of attracting customers. Action taken, management wishes to report that all the traders have since been relocated back to the market shelter. Appendix 11 shows the market and the marketeers trading in the markets. Remedial measure, management will ensure that all traders operate from designated areas in accordance with Section 6, subsection 1, subsection A of the Market and Bus Station Act number 2 of 2007. Management of Local Government Equalization Fund. Because of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to clarify that the funds reallocated from the bus station to the three projects through an ordinary council meeting that was held in 2024. Action taken, management wishes to report that it has since formally written to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development to request authorization. Ready funds. Projects. The appendix supports our submission, Chairperson, on Appendix number 11. Remedial measure, management has since, it's in a follow-up later to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development to seek authorization as we have not received the response. Stowed works. Because of the query, management wishes to acknowledge the auditor's findings and wishes to state that the stored works on the project was a result of failure by the contractor to complete the project. Action taken, management wishes to report that the contract was terminated and the remaining works are executed under the labor best. It was budgeted for in the 2025. Operations. Remedial measure, management will. The completion of this project within. This is only. I also wanted to add another. To support. The other query, Chair, is on the audit opinion, which was qualified. Because of the remedial measure, management will continue to prepare its accounts in accordance with International Financial Reporting Standards, generally acceptable accounting principles and the local authorities' accounting practices and standards. Then on the budget, funding and expenditure on cause of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's observations and wishes to clarify that the cause of the query was due to failure to spend the 2.3 million as at 31st December 2021. So that is the breakdown, Chair. It's the same as, I think, query number.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
So let's go to page 15. Failure to insure.
Failure to insure motor vehicles. Management wishes to report that the matter has since been recommended for closure, Chair, and it is on Appendix number 15, as these vehicles were insured. Failure to install and maintain streetlights. Because of the query, Chair, management wishes to clarify that the cause of the query was the installation of streetlight poles without solar lamps, which was due to budgetary constraints. The project was phased, install the poles first and then install solar lights afterwards. Management wishes to report that the matter was taken to the CDF Committee, which could not approve the procurement of the solar lamps, and the evidence is on Appendix 16. Remedial measures, management will continue to engage and lobby the relevant stakeholders to ensure that installation of streetlights is done. Other query, Chair, is on failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Management wishes to respond that the cause of the query, Chair, is that management acknowledges the auditor's observations regarding the council's failure to settle statutory obligations both to ZRI and NAPSa, which was due to the narrow revenue base and the high penalty interest that have been slapped on us. Action taken, management, Chair, wishes to report that it has commenced the process of settling these statutory obligations on the current, on the current bills. We started with ZRI. We've also paid NAPSa, and we've also further proposed the payment plan with NAPSa, which we are discussing at the moment. So the table below shows what we owed and what we've paid so far. And the evidence, Chair, is as attached on Appendix 17. Remedial measure, management will continue making payments as funds become available. The other one, Chair, the other query is failure to settle off obligations. Our response. That the, because of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to clarify that the query was due to the non-payment of settling in allowances and termino benefits owed to the staff. Management wishes to report that the institution has begun making staff obligations through the payroll. So the table below shows what we've paid so far. And the evidence is on Appendix 18. Remedial measure, management will continue making payments as funds become available. The other query is on Appendix 31, Management of Local Government Equalization Fund. Because of the query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to clarify that the cause of the query was the non-payment of the borrowed funds at the time of the audit query. Management wishes to state that 608,616,029 kwacha was spent in 2024 on capital projects, as shown below. So management also wishes to report that they're paying back the monies that we borrowed from the capital account. And Appendix 19 speaks to that response. In terms of remedial measures, management will continue making repayments as funds are available as the repayment plan that we've made, which we've attached. Lack of rescue ambulances and marine rescue equipment. Because of query, management acknowledges the lack of rescue ambulance and marine rescue equipment. This short for. Which has hindered the procurement of essential rescue equipment to adequately serve the community. Action taken, management have secured funds under the CDF to procure a Bowser fitted with a high pressure pump, while the ambulance, Chair, will be procured centrally by the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. See the Appendix 20 that is attached to our report. Remedial measure, management will continue to engage relevant stakeholders to ensure the procurement of rescue ambulances and marine rescue equipment. Is successfully achieved. Actually, it lack of firefighting equipment. Management acknowledges the absence of. Which is due to insufficient funding, preventing the procurement of essential firefighting tools needed to adequately serve the community. Action taken on the matter, management, Chair, has secured funds under CDF to procure the same Bowser like I mentioned, which we are fitting with the high pressure pump as well as the ambulance. We are procuring a Bowser because of the cost implications if we were to get a fire tender. Then management, the remedial measure, management will continue to engage the relevant stakeholders to ensure the procurement of rescue ambulances and marine rescue equipment for the institution to successfully achieve its target. Chair, I wish to submit. I thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Honorable members, just points of gratifications. Mr. Singombe.
Chair, thank you so very much. Seshake, you are just by the borderline. And for me, you, you are supposed to be up to date to certain facilities so that you give a very good picture to people who are coming in the country. You should be a point where people are so attracted and see what is beyond Seshake. Looking at your financial base, do we see ourselves getting to a municipal level? I'm asking this question, Chair. I see a lot of areas where even insuring motor vehicles. The auditor. I know this subject has been closed, but look, something could have happened before probably the Auditor General came, resulting to the loss of your property because you know that if a vehicle is not insured, it is involved in RTA, it becomes a huge cost. Secondly, Chair, there is an issue of street lighting. Do we see ourselves getting to the next level as an authority? Are we going to remain as a district council? Do we see ourselves, Chair, this team? Is it looking forward to a situation where out of good works, then Seshake is upgraded? Even failing to maintain the ablution blocks. And this brings me to a question as to what are your main sources of revenue? How much are you getting? Probably per month? And what is your expenditure per month? Because surely Seshake should be one of those districts that are supposed to be attractive from across. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Council Secretary.
Thank you so much, Chairperson. We'll speak generally to the two questions, then probably Director Finance can come in and narrow down on the issues of sources of revenue. I totally agree 100% Chairperson with the sentiments of the Honorable Member over the committee in that Seshake we are strategically located. And therefore, we should be at a different level in terms of our investments as well as in terms of our revenue, the revenue base. And of course, also, maybe the biggest issue is, I think we had challenges in terms of engagement with stakeholders. The biggest challenge that we have is the land. I think it's not adequate for a number of investments that we may want to bring. We've done engagements with the powers that be, and of course, we've not yet concluded. And that is the expansion that may give us that status where we can go to a municipality. Some of the things that we've proposed, the relocation of our airstrip because it's just right behind our CBD, and of course, there's some land that we've been promised to be given, and then that land is developed. We cannot even bring in a shopping mall, we cannot bring in these other things because of the limited land that we have. And also relocation of some, even some of the government facilities, there's been that proposal, like we have a prison that is just along the main road. There are those proposals, council passed a resolution so that we relocate somewhere, and that land is prime. It is developed probably into a shopping mall, and these are some of the things that will bring in a lot of people and also a lot of properties so that we upgrade to municipality status. In terms of enhancing revenue, one of the strategies that we've done is the way we've gone into an agreement with ZRIA is one of the strategies because there was a lot of pilfering and we were getting low monies. So we've entered into an agreement, ZRIA collects on our behalf, and that's why we are even able to pay some of the statutory obligations like paying ZRIA is because of enhanced revenue. And also, we've invested into a block-making machine, and our blocks are tested by National Council for Construction, and mostly people are getting blocks from as far as Rosaka. So we hope to generate a bit of some income from those other initiatives apart from our motel, and we also are operating a minibar at the, at the border. All these are meant to enhance that we improve on our revenue collection in order to ensure that we provide the much-needed services to our community. Maybe if there's anything that I've left out, Chair, I ask your indulgence that I allow my Director of Finance to add one or two things. I thank you, Chair.
Director Finance, in addition, how much do you collect from the right at the, I know ZRIA is collecting, but how much is that because of a lot of traffic?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Currently, ZRIA is collecting, it fluctuates, it's not really constant. Sometimes it's 320, some months it's 350,000. Like previously, it was 389. It fluctuates according to the number of traffic at the border. Then the other source of revenue, which is one of the major, is timber levy. Monthly, again, it fluctuates, depends with how many have concession and production, even though currently it's really going down because I think those with concession, they're relocating to Sioma, Kaoma, some they've even gone as far as Kasempa. Timber in our district, it's reducing. So sometimes 25,000, sometimes comes down 18, so it depends with how much, how many trucks are being exported to these neighboring countries. Then for cattle levy, monthly sometimes is 3.5, sometimes it goes up to 5,000 kwacha. So currently, there are only two major sources of revenue for Seshake Town Council, which is trucks and timber levy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. Switch off your mic, DF.
Thank you.
Chair, when you look at the response from management.
On page what?
On. The CS is talking about expanding, but for me, I think he's improving on what you have. If you are not in a position to maintain ablution blocks, just ablution block, CS, even if you asked for, for space, it will become more difficult for you. So for me, Chair, it is looking at the little, what is within their jurisdiction. When you look at page 10, one of the reasons, Chair, for failure to maintain ablution block is just replacement of pipes. And look at the, 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 the proximity from Zambezi into, and then you fail to maintain running water. So Chair, for me, the reasons do not really convince me. Secondly, I'm, I'm very much aware that there are a lot of animals, CS, that are living western province into southern province through a number of routes. Is there anything that you, you are, you are doing as a local authority to ensure that you see all the areas or maybe open up so that you can maximize in revenue? You have alluded to cattle levy, and for us in southern province, you are the cheapest source, source of livestock, and there are things that you are using to ensure that you collect every piece of money rather than allowing people use unconventional routes.
Yes, CS, are you getting that, that counsel?
Yes, Chairperson, I've gotten the counsel, Chair.
If you look at Seshake actually from right, if you at the border, I don't know how much, how much you are collecting maybe from, as rights on the other side because right up to the entrance of the border there, the main facility for ZRIA, all these houses on the sides, seemingly they are not planned. It's like there is no plans, just like a big shant, and then you come up here as you are coming to the prison, maybe a bit this side they organized, but the other side, they're not organized. How are you managing to collect? How much are you collecting in terms of ground rates? We need to reorganize that one of town. It's a busy town and people are using that route, a lot of them. Are you running a lodge that side and the track park?
Yes, Chairperson, we are, we have a lodge, and there's a track park, it's, though it's not yet, we've not yet concluded in terms of the construction, we are using the funds from the sector devolution program, the grant that is being, that the support, evolution support program. We'll be able to construct, still using that space, and we are charging because we put our council police there, and then there's also a minibar that is operating from there. And in terms of reorganization, Chair, I agree again with you 100%. I think it looks disorganized. The reason why we mentioned that we've made a proposal to our parents, our BRI, that we go into a planning agreement, we reorganize first of our border area there and also the towns that are closer to the district so that we replan them, and then we enter into an agreement with them in terms of how are we going to do the offering and how are we going to manage the proceeds that are going to come from there.
Thank you very much. Honorable Member, Honorable Manza?
Let's go to page 11.
Page 11 of your report, witness.
On the failure to implement budgeted and funded projects. Council had planned to implement nine projects at a total cost of 1,871,347 kwacha, and six were, six projects had been implemented, leaving three, which were valued at 660,547 unimplemented. The projects that are implemented are on page 12, and this is the budget. Fire station, Nissan hot body, Nakatindi market, Sokaway and septic tank. The action taken is that management wishes to report that it has since formally written to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development to request authorization to utilize the funds. They have asked for a variation of funds from bus station to fund the three projects above. And appendix 12 is showing, it is on a separate, separate booklet, appendix 12, there's a letter from Seshake to, to Minister of Local Government to, to seek support from bus station project for 660,547. My points of gratification are, the, from the unspent funds using the local government equalization fund, which is on page 11, there's enough evidence that you had enough to these three projects. Why then did you write to Ministry of Local Government and Housing to seek for the grant funding for the, for the, for the bus station? And yet, from the financial details, it shows that you had 660,000 to, to implement these three projects. The second question is in, what is the status of these three projects? Because I see there's no response from Ministry of Local Government. The letter that you wrote on 29th, 29th May 2024, where are we?
First, we deal with this. Council Secretary, where are we on this project?
I thank you, Chairperson. Thank you for the question. The first question is why did we ask for authority from the Ministry of Local Government when these funds were available? Like we've indicated, Chairperson, these were varied funds. The funds initially were meant to support the construction of the bus station, and then when the government came in that they are going to help us with the construction of the bus station, we had to vary the funds. And since the, the, the budget was approved by the ministry, we had to ask them so that they can allow us to apportion these funds according to the breakdown that we've given. So that is the reason why we requested for the ministerial approval so that they agree to the variation of these, these funds. Then in terms of where are we, Chairperson, we've not sat even as we are waiting for the response from the ministry, like the Nakatindi market and Sokaway, this has been done using, we had to source funds from somewhere when we realized that the response was delaying. We had to source for funding from, from CDF where we concluded, we completed the ablution block, which has since been completed, and also the septic tank and Sokaway has also been completed so that we commission the, the market probably by the end of this month or early next month. Sincere apologies, Chairperson, that we didn't make mention of these other efforts that we are making apart from the, the house. On the Nissan hot body, the evidence may not be here, but we are, we are using local resources from the maintenance vaults of vehicles, and we've started working on the, on the vehicle. I wish to submit, Chair.
So do you have the pictures for the ablution block that you are here to commission? You have the pictorial evidence?
Yes, Chair, they are on that, appendixy, appendix 12, Chair.
Okay, Dr. Manza, in addition?
Just a follow-up. Now, CS, this, you requested to vary the funds from bus station in 2024. And with the passage of time, no response from government, you ended up using your locally generated resources to implement, from your, from this conversation, I can see that all the three projects are being implemented using locally generated resources, disregarding the application to the Ministry of Local Government to vary the funds. Did you make a follow-up on this application? Or since you applied and there is no response, then you had to use your own initiative? And are you planning to inform the ministry formally to say, we want to, we have constructed, we have implemented these projects, so please ignore that request that we made in 2024?
Council Secretary, since you have worked on those that you wanted funds varied, are you planning to inform them to do away with your request?
Chair, that will be the direction that we are, we are, we are going to take, more especially for the ablution block. We looked at the amount that was involved, I think it was just about 80,000 that were able to meet from our own budgets, and also looking at the nature of, of the projects. It is of public interest and it's at the market, and it's also a facility that will also help us generate revenue, the toilet as well as the, the market, and that's why we had to do that investment. We definitely inform the, inform the ministry, sir.
Is there a follow-up on this?
Yes, the CS is saying that is the step that they will take, meaning they haven't, and this is the 2023 report, Chair. Look at the time that has already gone. When are you doing that?
CS, when are you, when are you doing the action that you want to take?
Chair, we will do it immediately, Chair.
Yes, CS, Dr. Manza, is it on the same? Okay. Before I go to another item.
Okay, I think we, maybe we just want to have a very clear understanding because when I look at your, at the minutes in page 12, on appendix 12. Minutes, just after the letter that was written to Ministry of Local Government to seek for authority to use the 660, so there's minutes of the proceedings of the plans, works, healthy, environmental and so on. So there is some preamble which says that it was reported for the consideration of the committee that the local authority was in receipt of a letter dated 28th December 2023 from the Permanent Secretary of Technical Services informing the local authority that funds amounting to 6 million kwacha were allocated to Seshake for the construction of a bus station. Members were further informed that contractors' site visit to the proposed bus station site following the advertisement of the project by the ministry was held on 7th March 2024, which received competitive turnout. Is it from this grant allocation of 6 million to construct this station that you seek this 660,000 kwacha for supporting these three projects?
Council Secretary, is it from that, that fund?
Yes, and also, we are, we are curious, how, how is the progress of, I mean, has the, the bus station taken off?
Council Secretary, from, is it from the same fund and what's the status of the bus station? And what's the status of the bus station?
Thank you so very much, Chairperson. The funds is not from the same. The reason why we requested for variation, because the funds were allocated to construct the bus station. And then government indicated that they had given us an allocation of six million. So those monies that we are supposed to be financed using the Local Government Equalization Fund, we had to seek for authority from, then from the ministry. And there should be used elsewhere. So in other words, the money is not coming from the six million, Chair.
Honorable Sengambi?
Okay, fine, so through Chair there. So from this narrative, now that you have implemented these three projects using other locally generated resources, what happens to that six hundred and sixty thousand kuacha that you already allocated for the bus station? Now that government is coming in for the bus station?
Council Secretary?
Thank you, Chairperson. If you look at our report, I think there were three things that we wanted to finance using the same funds. And once the variation is given, part of it is going to go to the construction of the fire station, which we haven't yet touched.
So when you are responding, you don't say, if you look at, you say, according to our report. It's more honorable and official, formal. Council Secretary, I want to appreciate your appearance this afternoon. And we expect the best report under CDF. Seshake is a small council, very minimal revenue. I know the doctor is itching to say something. Dr. Sengambi, as I wind up?
Chair, thank you so very much. I just want to take the local authority back on the earlier question that I had asked. They talked of, when you look at page, page ten, if I'm not mistaken, on the failure to. There's somewhere where they talked of failure to install streetlights, Chair. And the CS has indicated that it is done in a phased manner. For me, that's a very good approach in a situation where you don't have available sources. But what is worrying me, Chair, is that the CS has indicated that when they took the matter to CDF Committee, it wasn't approved. Meaning, Seshake will still continue living in a thick darkness. So what are we doing to ensure that Seshake is bright in terms of streetlights? Don't we have locally generated resources that we can, Chair, put into that area? So Seshake is given the light that it requires, especially in the night?
Thank you very much. Before you respond to that, let me allow Dr. Manza, because if the plane had already started coming down. So let me ask Dr. Manza a bullet question. Let's have a bullet question from him.
Thank you, Chair. It will really be a bullet. Can you confirm that six hundred and sixty thousand is in your account and utilized? And what is your plan to retract this letter to the Ministry of Local Government? Because the purpose of varying the funds, we had to fund those three projects. Now this time, if you still have the six hundred and sixty, you still have now to write to local government to vary the funds to other projects. So do you have the money? And if we get a bank statement, can we show, can we prove that you have the money?
Council Secretary, under cap twelve of the laws of Zambia, do you have the money?
Thank you, Chair, once again. The money, Chairperson, is not in the account, but we've started paying back. I think it was utilized for some other council obligations.
Any evidence of that action, of you starting paying? Do we have evidence, DF? Pardon?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we have evidence, I think, and statutory obligations where we actually saw, the query is on on local maintenance of Local Government Equalization Fund, where we attached, we attached the payment plan.
So DF, was it a misapplication or what? Because those funds were not meant for that, isn't it?
No, Chair.
So you decided to do that without, probably, I know, without authority, isn't it?
You are right, Chair.
So DF, you are a seasoned financial man. You know that those things are things that we should do, not even remind you, shouldn't even be talking about them because you are aware and aware that we are not supposed to be doing those things. CS, I want you to put your house in order. Let the heads of departments, different departments, do what they are supposed to be doing. We have seen what we have seen on your report. It's average, but you can do better than this. Seshake, there is a lot of money there, it's just like another point of entry and exit. But Seshake, we have a lot of traffic and we have a lot of business, a lot of things happening there. So in terms of levies, I think you can be collecting something. But above all, you must organize our beautiful town. Just from the interest, I understand and I know that in western province, you have to engage the BRI every time you want to replan or you want to develop a place. But the interest of Seshake is you come from Mandy. No, it looks like you are going into a village. And even when you are coming from Namibia, before you come to the bridge, this, it's not nice. We, and I know that the only streetlights visible are the ones on the bridge. So let's do something, let's work together and make sure that we improve the first, we first lift that town. And because it's an entrance point into the country and people wants to see that where we are going, we are not going into mafia, you know, community, but we are going into an organized society. With these few words, I want now to withdraw the immunity that was conferred on you at the beginning of our interaction and allow you to travel back to Seshake, expecting a very good report in April under CDF. Thank you very much. You may take leave.
Thank you so very much, Chair.
There you have it. Seshake Town Council has just finished making their submission or appearing before the committee on local government accounts. And that was under consideration of the report of the Auditor General on the audit of the local accounts for the financial, for local authorities for the financial year ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-three. And earlier on, we did have KMA Town Council that made their submission. And this afternoon at fourteen thirty, we do expect to have the live parliamentary proceedings broadcast here on Parliament Television. And so I'd urge you to continue watching Parliament Television, the only session that brings Parliament closer to you. On behalf of the entire production crew, I wish you a pleasant afternoon.